I started, I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, October 10th, meeting of the common council. Mr. Peterson, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lee's, will you call the roll?
Mr. Eyre?
Present.
Mr. Boyce?
Present.
Mr. Davis? Mr. O'Connor?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Sparks?
Present.
Ms. Wilds? Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes for our September 26th joint meeting with the plan commission?
Who to approve? Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve our minutes for our September 26th joint meeting with the plan commission. This is a hand vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Seven oh. Approval of the amendments for our September 26th meeting?
Who to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve our minutes for our September 26th meeting. This is a hand vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Seven oh. Approval of the agenda?
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor raise your right hand. Seven oh. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present, I have one, if there's anybody else that would like to speak, there are more than, there are slips of paper out there and you can give those to Ms. Lee's and we'll call you up when your item is considered. Mr. Murphy, would you like to speak now or when your item is up? Yeah, perfect. All right, moving on to committee reports. Rhodes?
Rhodes, Rhodes Committee met on the 6th of October. Ms. Krupsky and engineering crew were there along with Ms. Johnson with street department, Chad Connect, connect public service, Ms. Lee's, Mark Boyce, myself and Mr. O'Connor joined us via something?
Teams.
Teams. Street, the 2023 street rehabilitation contract two, concrete works has just started in the Morris Point subdivision. Old Town south of Cherry, east of 10th Street, concrete work is going to start late October. Pinehurst, the Pepperbrook Village concrete's complete, paving's underway. Prairie crossings and the Woods Greens concrete's complete and they're going to pave when they're done in Pinehurst. Hamlet County projects, everybody knows about the 146th and Aliceville's, we'll stay off of that one today. State Road 37 and 141st Street interchange. The bidding on that is going to be in the spring of '24 in construction, probably won't take place till '25 or '26. State Road 32 and 38, roundabout and 32 and River Road roundabouts are substantially complete. The Oakmont roundabout, they put up the stoplight, as most of you are aware, on 32 to help get out of Oakmont. They've closed these north entrance. That light will be there for approximately 75 days. State Road 32 reconstruction, that's going to be a fun one. That consists of downtown 8th to 19th Street and that'll start construction late March of '24. Natural road construction, sewers, storm sewer work. 37 and 186th Street, reduce conflict intersection, which is needed badly, was going to take place late '23, but it's been moved to '24. 37 and 191st Street will be a part of that and that's construction in '24. Pleasant Street bids were open for phase two and three, they came in a little bit under the estimated budget and they were awarded, I believe, today. No, they have not been awarded? On the 24th, okay. Little Chicago Road Trail over Morse, road closure restrictions will start in the early winter of '24 and run through June 20th of '24. There'll be a four-month full bridge closure at that site, starting, they anticipate, in June. New complaint trail going south has been pretty much substantially completed and they're hoping to have a ribbon cutting shortly. That's all I have. Mr. Boyce, Mr. O'Connor, you want to add anything to that?
Lot of things going on.
Several orange cones everywhere.
Orange barrels.
I think you touched on it, but the roundabouts outside of 32, 38 and 32 and River Road look great. No one from engineering's here, but they've done a great job in pushing the project along. It helps a ton over there.
Any other questions for Mr. Eyre? Not, we'll move on to finance, Mr. O'Connor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met October 5th. We have a couple of these things on our agenda this evening. We discussed the public safety meet and confer agreement, so I'm going to allow Mr. Connect to fill everybody in on those. But this came to the council with a favorable recommendation from the finance committee. I will say they took a forward-looking view and I think it's appropriate. I think the committee agreed, so we will be looking at an agreement for '24 and '25. So, job well done by both sides on the agreements. We have additional appropriation for golf, which sounds like we're spending more money, but in actuality, we're actually appropriating additional monies the golf operation has generated to spend things that have, costs have increased as a result of the increase in the demand for golf. So that's all good news. I can remember 10 years ago, that wasn't the case. So, golf operation is moving ahead very well. I think revenues will probably be in the million six, if not a higher range for the year, so that's all great news. Then we've got the appropriation transfers that we do quarterly along with the grant proceeds and I think Mr. Spalding's going to fill us in on that if he's still here, he is. And then the claims come to you with a favorable recommendation, but most of the meeting was kind of circled around public safety and meet and confer, so that's my report.
Any questions for Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the claims.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the claims, this is a hand vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Seven oh. Misslanious number one, council to consider memorandum of understanding between the city of Noblesville and the Noblesville Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 198 with respect to benefits and compensation of certain employees of the city of Noblesville. Mr. Connect?
Good evening, council. Chad Connect, I'm the director of public safety for the city of Noblesville and I have Chief Mann and the FOP negotiating team, President David Barnes, Vice President Spencer Flowers here with us tonight. As Councilor O'Connor alluded to, we present to you tonight, our meet and confer process has concluded and we present to you our agreed-upon meet and confer agreement, which is a two-year agreement. It's very forward-thinking and allows us the flexibility and the planning to meet not only today's needs, but also tomorrow's public safety needs. Some of the high points on the bullet points, as I said, this proposed agreement is for two years. Year number one would allow for 8% compensation increase for the police department and year number two is a 6% based upon 100% of projected revenues earned. However, that is on a sliding scale that is included on your copy of the meet and confer agreement that can go from 4 to 8% based upon if we're under or below those projected earnings. What that does allows us to plan for the future growth and allow that, increase that staffing now and still be within our directed budget in order to keep us at that $1.10 tax rate and be fiscally responsible. Mayor Jensen submits this proposal to you for consensus based upon the fact that we're not only planning for today's needs, but tomorrow's needs. We're working on the salaries and the working conditions of both our police department and our fire department of firefighters. Because it's a very competitive environment right now and some communities have had to make very significant increases to their salaries and benefits in order to attract people, we are going to be competitive with that and also maintain a top-tier police department and fire department for the city of Noblesville while also allowing us to maintain top-tier equipment and state-of-the-art training for our police department and fire department to make sure that we ensure the public safety of all those that visit and live in Noblesville today, tomorrow and into the future. This allows us, the sliding scale for year two allows us to not only plan for fair compensation and equitable working conditions for them for '25, but also to allow for it to increase if our projections are higher than what we anticipated or if our earnings are below what were projected. We can maintain a competitive and fair and equitable salary and benefits for our police officers and firefighters while still maintaining our staffing without doing anything that would jeopardize our training, equipment or reductions in staff. This was a long process and I want to thank Matt Light, Jeff Spalding, the OFA team and Holly Ramone, as well as the FOP and their negotiating team and Chief Mann for the leadership in this process. It goes through and it allows us to maintain that $1.10 tax rate, as I said. And one thing that's very important, it works on not only the base salary, but the working conditions, time off, allowing for mental health of the officers, the stability of our police department and fire department. And on the police side, the base pension, which is one of the most competitive things of the police officers you've seen in the media, I'm sure, accounts of departments around giving fairly significant one-time bonuses for new hires that go into that. And they're doing that to attract people, but the forward-thinking of the FOP and the mayor and his team and us going into this meet and confer process, we want to look out for our officers, not only on day one, but throughout their career for our police officers and firefighters. So we invest that money into their long-term salaries that goes into their pension base to make sure to look out for their wellbeing after they've served our city and are in retirement. With that being said, the base salary that was the pension base for the police department in 2021 was $71,497.60. At the conditional 6% based upon 100% of our projected earnings for 2025, the 2025 base salary for the pension base will be $90,627.68. That's a 27% or $19,130 over four-year increase. I think that's very forward-thinking of the city and the police department and it takes care of our officers going forward after their career, making sure that their long-term they feel valued as part of our team, maintaining as they show their value, we show our value and support for them, they show that value and support projected to our citizens as they go out and protect and serve us going forward. There were also some other working conditions such as the detective stipend was included for lieutenants and sergeants within investigations division, which currently now do not receive that, detective investigative stipend and FTO stipend and some of those conditions. So, we believe it's a fair, comprehensive and very good agreement for both the city of Noblesville ensuring our public safety from our police department and also for the police officers in the police department going forward. It allows us that two-year planning to strategically plan for our needs and staffing going into the future. With that, I propose to you our '24, '25 meet and confer process for the police department.
Any questions for Mr. Connect?
No, I would just say, and I think I said in my finance committee comments, but this was well thought out. Obviously, we've had inflation in play here recently that drives some of these numbers, but our number one, or at least in my mind, our number one priority is public safety and we can't compromise on that, we never really have, not as long as I've been on the council for 16 years. And I think we need to continue to be committed to that, we have the resources to do it and I think our citizens expect that that's where we would invest. So, we've made that commitment and I, you know, I commend the officers for being, you know, mindful of the fiscal responsibility and it goes for the fireside too. I mean, it's probably, it's the biggest thing we do from a cost standpoint and it's highly valued by all of us and I think everybody we represent. So, I just appreciate all the work that you guys have done and you're cognizant of, you know, what it's all about, which is keeping people safe and being there when they need them and I think the citizenry certainly respects that and likes to see people on the street. So, I appreciate everything you guys have done and I'd be happy to make a motion, but there may be some other comments, so I'll yield the floor.
I just wanted to add, if you don't feel safe, none of the rest of this matters. You know, none of this planning, none of this, it doesn't matter, so thank you for all you do.
I have a quick question, just for members of the public that may not be familiar with the meet and confer process. Can you talk a little bit about when this process starts and, you know, how this agreement comes together? Just a quick reader's digest version for someone that may not be familiar.
Yes, sir. We started about three months ago. Last year was a two-year agreement also, so we had that goal in mind to continue our strategic plan and we started meeting about three months ago with myself, Deputy Mayor Light, the human resources director, Holly Ramone and Chief Mann, as well as the FOP negotiating team. And the same with the fires, the fire union negotiating team, those meetings started at the same time with police and fire about three months ago. We start with the base agreement from the previous term and then we look at what suggestions or recommendations come from that for enhancements moving into '24 and '25 by both the city and the union representatives on where we can go into the future and how we need to continue the service that we have had. We then go back and forth like any negotiations process and come to agreement on those terms. Sometimes it's very tedious, you know, back and forth and we share perspectives and come to an agreement and consensus on them. From my perspective at least, at the end of that process, nothing but the utmost respect for everybody involved. You know, our firefighters, our union negotiating team looking out for the best interest of their firefighters and police officers from the union's perspective. Us with that, the underlying drive of the, one of the most significant pillars of Mayor Jensen's administration is public safety. And as you know, with public safety, it's the need, it always comes before the tax revenue. So we have to be very strategic in planning on how we do that growth and that training prior to the need for those additional officers or firefighters is there because if we wait until that growth catches up, we're already behind. So this strategic planning takes that into consideration. We go back and forth at those meetings until we come to an agreement that everyone finds fair, equitable and positive for both the citizens of Noblesville, it's fiscally responsible and it shows the support of the city towards our police officers and firefighters.
Thank you. Mr. President, I will move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the fraternal order of police lodge 198.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding with the fraternal order of police lodge 198 as presented. This is a hand vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Seven oh. Thank you very much. Misslanious number two, council to consider a memorandum of understanding between the city of Noblesville and the Noblesville Professional Firefighters International Association of Firefighters Local 4416 with respect to benefits and compensation of certain employees of the city of Noblesville.
Can you thank you again, council, again, Chad Connect, Director of Public Safety. I'm joined from the fire department, Chief Todd Estes and Jim Butts, President of Local Firefighters Union 4416 and State or Regional Office, yes, correct. Yes, it gets confusing with. with the 4416 and the local Noblesville, and I get that confused all the time since Tony Murray's left and went on to the state, reminds me of that. So I won't bore you with duplicating many of the comments. We've discussed the process, the same process for the firefighters. Again, thanks to our negotiating team on our side with Matt Light, Holly Ramone, Jeff Spalding, the OFA team, as well as the administrative staff and for the Fire Department, Chief Matt Mitchell, and the union negotiating team led by Jim Butts. Again, this was a very engaging discussion from the beginning, nearly three months ago, to go through this process. On behalf of Mayor Jensen, again, I believe we substantiate his significant pillar of public safety going forward. As you've seen, the need, and we discussed it earlier, we brought in the Safer Grant, which brought the federal grant for additional 23 firefighters to the City of Noblesville, which showed the need for the growth in that public safety field. And we believe this meet and confer process and the agreement that we've created shows the value of our firefighters, paramedics, in going forward and serving their portion of the public safety for the City of Noblesville. This, this agreement, again, also like the police department, it's a two-year agreement, allows us to do that strategic planning to meet the needs not only today, tomorrow, but into the future with our staffing, as well as our benefits for the firefighters playing for the future. In year one, the one difference is on the Fire Department meet and confer side, the key significant, the total compensation annual package for year one is $984,000 increase, accounting for the pay and benefits increase, as well as that additional staffing. The significant difference between police and fire on this two-year agreement is that for year one of the Fire Department, it is 8% increased for most of the sworn officers within the Fire Department. However, for first-class firefighters, that is 9.5%. Because at the end of the '22-'23 meet and confer process, that agreement that went through was some of the discretionary spending in order to balance out that disparity between ranks and get the appropriate amount of dollars between ranks to encourage our best and brightest to take those promotional exams or those specialty kills, skills, and apply those to the training, get the best and brightest in the department. They applied that based upon the first-person study. They analyzed all of our positions and evaluated those. And there became a disparity between the first-class firefighter salary, which was the pension base, and the first-class police officer, which was the pension base. So that started out with, beginning this year, a nearly $1,400 disparity between the pension base for first-class firefighter versus first-class police officer. So in attempts to balance that out, the compensation for first-class firefighters for year one of this agreement is 9.5%. Now it allows us to close that gap significantly for firefighters to get it within $500 of the police officer's, first-class police officer's pension base. In year two, again, based upon 100% of our projected earnings, that's a 6% increase for all ranks within the Fire Department as it was in the police department. And like the police agreement, this is on a sliding scale based upon above or below our projected earnings that allows us to plan for the staffing, training, and equipment into the future without any reductions in the quality of our training, quality of our equipment, or reductions in staffing. Some of the other significant increases allowed for the change in the adjustment for paramedic stipends to 9% rather than a dollar amount. Paramedics, as you know, now we have more medic runs than fire runs every day. That's a very specialized skill and a lot of training dedication and continuing education for our paramedics and ensure that we have top-quality candidates that are our paramedics outright on our apparatus. We want to compensate them fairly for the amount of time dedication they have to spend in honing that skill and maintaining those certifications. Additionally, this increase, we started out 16th overall in the state for our pension base prior to this meet and confer agreement. This meet and confer agreement moves us to sixth place in the state for our pension base for our firefighters, which is a significant improvement and puts us where we need to be as a top-tier, high-quality fire department for the state of Indiana. Put our fire department against any in the state for the quality and service that they produce. We want to reward and show them that respect and compensate them fairly for their work. The pension base increased from 2021 of $71,468 to in '25, if we get 100% of our projected earnings in that 6% increase, it will be $90,149 for the pension base, which equates to a 26% increase over four years, which is significant and shows the value for our firefighters in establishing the public safety in the City of Noblesville. It's also fiscally responsible, allows us to maintain, again, that $1.10 tax rate for the citizens of Noblesville and remain within our spending goals and being fiscally responsible for the taxpayers of Noblesville while providing top-tier public safety. With that, I submit the '24-'25 meet and confer agreement for our.
Does the Fire Department get to bring guns to the negotiation like the police department?
They have axes, which are actually a little more intimidating.
Any other questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we approve miscellaneous number two memorandum of understanding between the City of Noblesville and the Noblesville Professional Firefighters International Association of Firefighters Local 4416.
Second. There's a motion to approve, a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Noblesville Professional Firefighters International Association of Firefighters Local 4416. And a second, this is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. Thank you. Previously discussed ordinances, council to consider ordinance number 31-09-23, an ordinance approving an additional appropriation in the vehicle excise, surtax, wheel tax fund to provide funding for Pleasant Street Project Phases Two and Three. Mr. Spalding.
Yeah, Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO, and as was mentioned in the preview of the Finance Committee discussion, and as the council has been informed about several times on this, as part of the funding plan for Pleasant Street, one of the, the actions that the city took a couple of years back was establishing a vehicle excise tax and wheel tax to help, you know, pay for the cost of that project. And as we're now about to issue the second round of bonds for that project, some of the cash that has been accumulated from, from, from that fee is being put toward buying down that bond. So we are reducing the size of our borrowing to reduce the costs, the interest costs, and so on and so forth. And this is just your authorization for that money to be spent for that purpose, which is what it was always planned to be spent for.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding?
Mr. President.
Uh, we should do a public hearing first.
Oh, you do, yes.
Yeah. I will go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance number 31-09-23.
Mr. President.
Mr. Air.
Seeing no one from the public coming forward, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing for ordinance number 31-09-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. Now you can go ahead and.
Okay, Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance 31-09-23, ordinance approving an additional appropriation in the vehicle excise, surtax slash wheel tax fund.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 31-09-23. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council to consider ordinance number 32-09-23, an ordinance approving an additional appropriation in the debt service local income tax debt sinking fund to provide funding for the Levinson Garage Bond Payment. Mr. Zalgowski.
Yes, good evening. Second reading on this ordinance, briefly stated, the Levinson Garage was funded by a bond. The payments towards that bond were supposed to come first primarily from the Levinson TIF fund, and then any remaining balance to come from the debt service local income tax sinking fund. We had projected about $450,000 of TIF revenue to be available in 2023. That is falling short of projections. So we're coming to you to request additional appropriation out of Fund 118, the debt service local income tax sinking fund, so that we can cover that debt service payment.
Any questions for Mr. Zalgowski? Not. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance number 32-09-23.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Seeing no one from the public come forward, I move we close the public hearing for ordinance 32-09-23.
Second. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing for ordinance number 32-09-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I move that we approve ordinance 32-09-23, approving an additional appropriation in the debt service local income tax debt sinking fund to provide funding for the Levinson Garage Bond Payment.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 32-09-23. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Moving on to proposed, proposed development presentations.
Do we need to read it, or can I just make the motion? Do we need to read it, or can I just make?
Yeah, still need to read it.
Okay. Council to hear introductory information for a proposed residential townhomes development for approximately 20 acres west of Hazel Dell Road and south of and adjacent to the Midland Choice Trail to be known as Holland Meadows Plan Development.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second. There's a motion and a second to.
Postpone.
Postpone it to our next regular meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero.
Catching on the hand vote, that's good.
Yeah. Catching on, it's only nine months in, but. Okay, on to number two. Council to hear introductory information regarding an amendment to include townhomes on approximately 19 acres east of Moon Town Road and north of Castamere Drive, part of the Cranbrook Planned Development. Mr. Dobishewitz.
Thank you. For the record, John Dobishewitz with Nelson and Frankenberger, we represent the petitioner Platinum Properties Management Company. On their behalf this evening is Paul Rio, President of Platinum Properties, as well as Jim Schinner, our attorney with our office. The subject real estate, that's the matter before you this evening, is identified in yellow on the exhibit on display. It consists of approximately five acres in size. The 19 acres is the parent tract, and it's at the northeast intersection of Moon Town Road and Castamere Drive. The site is currently zoned R1 residential and subject to the provisions of the Cranbrook PUD. A townhome community consisting of approximately 50 lots is proposed on the real estate, which will require a rezone to the R5 designation, as well as a preliminary development plan amendment, which are the two ordinances that will be considered by the Plan Commission at their November 20th meeting. The proposed elevations for townhomes within this area are by Lennar Homes.
John, you might zoom that out a little bit. It's pretty zoomed in on there. Thanks.
This information is included behind tab four of the paper brochures that we submitted for your consideration this evening. Lennar will build three-story townhomes that are front-facing, so all the garages will be relegated to the rear and alley-fed. I'll show you that in a site location, site plan in one moment. Prices are anticipated from the upper $300,000s for those units to be priced from that individually. And the proposed layout of the site is shown here. As you can see from this illustration, the fronts of homes here would face Castamere, the fronts of dwellings here would face the perimeter of the site out to the east. Those along the north would face this direction. Those along Moon Town would face towards Moon Town Road. So as you're traveling north or south or along Castamere, you're always seeing that front elevation of a dwelling from the perimeter roadways. In addition to the information we've submitted tonight, we will be conducting a neighborhood meeting in advance of the Plan Commission meeting. We anticipate that to occur in early November, as well as the Plan Commission meeting, which will occur on November 20th. After consideration by the Plan Commission, we'll return back to the City Council for adoption consideration anticipated in December. Thank you very much.
Any feedback? Chad, a couple of quick questions before Mr. Air asks. It looks a little light on parking.
Each individual dwelling accommodates four parking spaces, two within the garage and two within the driveway, which are behind the unit. In addition to that, there's a plan for some additional parking spaces in addition to the four per dwelling unit on top of that that are yet to be identified on the development plan.
I assumed it was preliminary, but before Brian beat you up at TAC, I thought I should have. And then the elevations look a little flat. I know it's probably, I appreciate that it's all brick, just, and it's all come up in ARB, which I'm not on, but just a comment that side elevations are a little weak. That's one minor comment.
You thinking more windows?
More something. I don't know, it's just a little flat, a little, little plain, particularly.
Boxy.
Boxy, particularly the ones that face the public roads. Just some sort of, some sort of treatment would be nice.
I think overall, from my perspective, in addition to those comments, with those in mind, I think this is a really strong townhome product and really elevates the game. I would love to show something like this to other developers that are coming in to like, creating this type of product. So I appreciate you coming in with a strong initial concept.
The old brick's great.
Yep. Mr. Air.
I agree with all those comments. This is a product that I don't think we have here in Noblesville currently. And architectural on it looks good. I do agree with Mr. Peterson. The sides are, although it's nice to see it on pretty much a three-sided brick building, it needs some sort of treatment on the sides, especially when it's facing the road. I'll go back to the parking a little bit. Mr. Dobishewitz, are you anticipating additional parking of being street, or are you looking at adding something in some of these areas where there's no construction?
It may be a combination of on-street parking in addition to the, some spaces identified on the development plan at the north end of the Hammerhead here. I think we can accommodate some additional parking spaces, as well as potentially here and internal to the site. But we'll, we'll manage through that and address it at TAC before we go to the Plan Commission.
Would a portion of Castamere be on-street parking, too?
The potential exists for on-street parking there. We just haven't received comments yet from the Fire Department.
Yep.
Regarding their position if we were to allow for on-street parking along Castamere. So I don't want to tell you today.
Yep.
We, I haven't received their, their input.
Also, I don't see any type of amenity areas with the project. Do you have anything?
We're looking into providing some, a walking path and well, some seating areas or fire pits, something to that degree, adjacent to the open space.
Open space at the west side?
Along the east perimeter in this vicinity here. This, this area identified on the plan is dry detention, so we've got some more flexibility adjacent to that space than we would with a wet pond.
Is the intent to allow alley A to punch through to the site to the north? Is that the same, same group?
It's, it's not anticipated, but it could be provided in the future. The area to the north would remain R1 residential, and to the extent there became a plan in the future, they would need to return back to the council for consideration of a preliminary development plan, because if you recall back in 2016, when the original Cranbrook was developed, this entire space over here west of the existing homes was left identified as R1 residential, and no preliminary development plan was adopted for that space.
Is there a pipeline that runs up across that space?
There are significant pipelines to the north. There's, so there's a pipeline here, if you see on the map, and then there's one, two, across this area to the north. So there's very little area south of the woods that would accommodate any type of additional development in that space.
And the parcel south is commercial, correct?
It is not. The parcel at the, the hard corner is still one, it's still zoned R1 residential. And again, if development were proposed on that, that location, they would be required to come back to the council with a, two items, a rezone request to presumably plan business if it. if it was going to be commercial, as well as a preliminary development plan that would show the type and style of development that would occur in that space only for the council's consideration at a point in the future.
Well, it'd have its own separate HOA or part of?
It will have its separate HOA for the townhome space, because there'll be additional provisions in there regarding exterior maintenance exclusive to the townhomes. It's all common maintenance on the exterior. Nobody's mowing their own lawn. Nobody's taking care of the paint on their, or the roof on their outside of their dwelling. It's all done through the HOA.
Meaning it's free, well, so to speak.
Yeah, free.
Free.
Included.
Yeah, included. There's, that's your term.
John, as I'm looking at that, and maybe it's just my, you know, spatial challenges, but it almost looks like if you turn those townhomes about ten degrees to the west, like from the north, like this way, they're, they're that way, yeah. So that it, I don't know. Maybe it's just me, but those first, that first row of townhomes, it almost looks like it could be, and maybe even the ones on the east end. I know you want to stay perpendicular to the road on the south, but it almost seems like you could shift it. Might give it a little bit of a different look. I don't know that it matters materially, but.
We can take a look at it preliminarily when they explored that. The thought was.
Were they trying to do that?
Well, the thought was that it ended up opening up views of the alley in the parking behind the dwellings from southbound Moon Town.
Right.
So if you're traveling south here, you would see into that space. Rather where its position today helps obscure or shield that area parking.
I was just, as I'm looking at it, it just looks, I'm sure it'd be fine the way it is, but just spatially, it kind of looked like, yeah, it'd be turnable a little bit. It might be more appealing. But that's top-down. I don't know if it matters when you're driving. I'm looking straight on at it.
We'll take a closer look at that.
We've seen a lot of the recent projects that have pulled the building straight up, almost onto the street for a more urban feel. Moon Town may be too busy, but I mean, I would support taking a look at it, get it right up on the street.
Okay.
I don't know that Moon Town's going to give you the feel that you're going to give.
Like we got a, a fair point. So don't look at it too hard.
Did you just agree?
Mr. Air. Barely, barely.
First time somebody's agreed with me.
Any other questions?
You heard it here.
Reluctantly. Thank you.
Thanks for your time this evening.
New ordinances for discussion. Counsel to consider ordinance number thirty-five dash ten dash twenty-three, an ordinance adopting a change of zoning from SR suburban residential to R-one low-density, single-family residential for property at fifty-two sixty-three East One Fifty-Sixth Street.
Moved into.
Second. Ms. Ashman.
Good evening. So this property is on the south side of One Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street. It's almost exactly in between Hazel Dell Road and Gray Road. And it's surrounded on the south by, this is all part of the Westmore, Noble West PD. There is a house on approximately an acre. And then there is vacant properties and also properties that have homes on them, ranging in size from approximately an acre to over forty acres on the north side. The petition, the property is currently zoned SR. And the properties to the west and the north are zoned SR. And then we have an R-one PD with the Westmore development. The petitioner is currently building a home on the lot. They began construction in January. They are currently going through a multi-step process. They would like to divide this property, and it's currently three acres. They would like to divide it into three one-acre approximately lots. So this item has been heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The minimum lot width requirement for R-one is two hundred feet of frontage on a street. This lot, the three-acre lot, is three hundred and ninety-three feet wide. So regardless of whether it was split to two lots or three, they were going to need a variance for the lot width. So they've requested in August and received a variance to allow a reduction in the minimum lot width to approximately a hundred and thirty feet to accommodate the home that's under construction. So the distance from this property, or this edge of the home to the western property line is only a hundred and thirty-seven feet. They need a ten-foot setback from the property line. So the westernmost lot would be a hundred and twenty-seven feet. That would leave a hundred and thirty-three feet for the other two lots. So the Board of Zoning Appeals voted three, no, four-one to approve the variance. This went to Plan Commission. There was some discussion about driveway locations and number of driveways for the three lots. Because this is a multi-step process, the Plan Commission did recommend a maximum of two driveways. The actual number of driveways won't be determined until they do the primary plat for the lot. So this is step three of four to complete this project. The first step was the variance. They've also submitted annexation paperwork so that they can have city water and sewer. This process is third step. And then the fourth would be to submit a primary plat for review by the Plan Commission. And then they would submit a secondary plat to actually plat the lots. Plan Commission did send this to you with a favorable recommendation, seven-three.
Those three that voted against it, what were their?
Main concern were the driveway, number of driveways.
Okay.
The driveway and then one member was also on the BZA and voted consistently because now vote at the BZA.
Okay.
I was just going to say, there was significant discussion on this about whether there's enough room for that, especially with, if you look at where the home is positioned now. I think there's the people that voted for it, I don't think probably were, the majority of them were happy about thinking that it would fit in, but they thought that what we were voting on at the time legally seemed like to be passed and was a good thing. But I think there was significant talk given to the petitioner that they would have to give significant thought on how they could bring back a plan that would be voted in favor of, because the majority of people, I shouldn't say the majority. I'll speak for myself and say that I think that people, that there were quite a few people agreed with me, that I cannot figure out a plan that would work. And so while we're voting okay for this, then I think it's scary to go to that next step. Am I okay with that, legally?
You should ask that question before you speak.
Yeah.
I figured I'd yell at me and stop me if I start to go off too much of a cliff.
Right. There was significant conversation primarily about ability to have drive cuts onto this area, concern about congestion of traffic, and then the location of the existing residence that's being constructed being close to One Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street. So would there be enough room to have like one cut with a drive access? And so Mr. Hellman recommended two curb cuts would be all that would be allowed. So their, their recommendation to you was approve this, but with the condition that the development plan can only have two curb cuts.
And that would be decided in step four.
Yep.
Actual location of those drive cuts, yes.
And just to address, I know this is, we've had this conversation about this particular project, about why the BZA process went first. And the reason is, the proposal that the petitioner wanted was to divide their property into three lots. And that's going to require these four processes, Denise said. No matter which one we went with, there was always going to be another process hanging. We, we decided as a, as a staff that the thing that made the most sense to do was to determine if the Board of Zoning Appeals would approve the lot width. Because if they wouldn't, that killed the project. It was done because they couldn't do the three lots. So that's where we went first. Board of Zoning Appeals said, fine, now it comes to you. You're not. The Board of Zoning Appeals approval was conditioned on this board approving it. So you're not bound by the Board of Zoning Appeals decision. If you decide that's not what you want to do, you don't have to vote just because the Board of Zoning Appeals did. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yes, Mr. Air.
I'm just reading, the current R-one low-density standards, they could, if that was a four-hundred-foot lot instead of a three-hundred-and-ninety-three-foot lot, they could divide it and meet that R-one standard correctly into two lots.
Correct, but because it's only three hundred and ninety-three feet, they can't meet that standard.
So that six-foot difference makes, makes it so.
And I think, to your point, Mr. Air, that's why a number of people on the Planning Commission thought, okay, that's close enough. We're okay with this. However, I don't know that there, if you look at the way the house is positioned on this lot in Google Maps, I don't know that there's a way that they can make it work that we're going to be okay with.
Put it in two lots?
There was, there was also looking at the, the lots in Westmore, only sixty feet wide that they directly abut against. So they did give that consideration as well.
I'm inclined if there's only two driveway cuts to be allowed, that two lots would probably be more. I mean, we've had issues with common drives. We kind of gave those up years ago, didn't we?
Part of this proposal, the, the petitioner anticipates at least one of the people will be a family member on one of the adjacent lots.
That only lasts for so long.
I know.
Didn't we approve a common driveway on One Sixty-Sixth, other side of Noblesville, South Valley Fitness?
I don't worry.
I feel like I remember seeing one on Plan Commission, this two years ago.
That's also a family member situation. Do you remember Kevin's petition where the sister was building a house behind, next to the creek?
Yeah, Cumberland and One Sixty-Sixth. It's, it's fine. I, it's not.
Let me see if I can real quick, quickly see it, but.
Yeah, it's.
I remember the situation.
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions?
They've done that on nineteen with the, it was divided into four lots.
Any questions for Ms. Ashman before we move on to?
They did use an exist, they connected into an existing drive on that one. Yes.
Yep.
I would just chime in. I tend to agree with Mr. Air's comments on two lots. If you try to put three lots in here, that's going to be messy. That just, from a spatial standpoint, the house is already built. I don't know how they got. This sounds like cart before, horse before, cart before horse. So I have some empathy for the owner, but you got to get in here first and talk about it before you get this far. So it's always tough for us to have to try to figure out how do you fix it after the fact. But nonetheless, I still think Mr. Air is on target. I think he put two lots on here with two driveways, and that makes some rational sense to me. But just kind of.
So we, we can't really recommend two lots. We have to either vote up or down on the three-lot proposal.
Probably.
Well, what you're voting on is up or down on the R-one rezone. What the Board of Zoning Appeals has said is they're, they're okay with the smaller lots, subject to your R-one approval. So you could vote down on the R-one because you don't think you have sufficient information of the development plan. You could continue it and request additional information on development plan.
If they were perbed to two lots, they'd have to take it back in front of Plan Commission.
You could request that they make a condition that, that even though they have the ability under the BZA to do three, your approval is conditioned on them only doing two lots. You could, you could ask them for that commitment as well. But if you need more information.
They have to go back in front of the BZA or, or Plan Commission?
Not if they submit a written commitment to you, no.
Any other questions for Ms. Ashman? Is Mr. Skelton here on the?
Yes, Mr. Work's on vacation, so Mr. Skelton is filling in.
Vacation. Anything else that you'd like to add?
Yes, I won't repeat what Denise has offered, and she has a thorough report. But Matt Skelton with Church, Church, Hill and Antrim, with offices at Two North Ninth Street here in town. And it, it just sounds to me like you might benefit from seeing a schematic. I have not discussed that with the client. I'm standing in for Andy Work this evening, but why don't you let us do a little bit of homework? And then when we come back before you, maybe we can have a different discussion.
Would you like us to go ahead and continue it?
I, I was under the impression this would be a two-reed.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, did you want to?
My name's Terry Murphy. I live at five-three-five-five East One Hundred and Sixty-first Street. I also own property on fifty-four-ten East One Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street. Now you know why we started talking a few weeks ago about BZA approving on September fifth and preloading this, so that if you give an R-one, it goes to three. I've asked you guys this how many times? This is not a transitional area. This is the parcel we're talking about. This is a holdout from the Pulte subdivision that didn't sell. There was a house there. There was a person that lived there. They didn't get in on that. This, this property went for three hundred thousand dollars over, a little over a year and a half, maybe, not even a half. They go ahead and they build a house on it. Then they decide they want to come back and split it into three lots. The foundation's already there. Now they're not even needing their variance that they've gotten. Granted, it's, we're talking feet here, as Mr. Air is saying. The smart thing to do would have been two lots, kept it in an R-one and gone that route. But they're going three. This area, other than Glenda Haynes or Carter's, which is going to develop. But we need reaffirmation of our bulk requirements. These are all areas that this used to all be part of a hundred and seventy-five acre farm. I live here and I have a parcel here. The footprint was done back in seventy-three. We're not, we're not transitioning here. Now, if you're starting to give three-acre lots and be, you're jeopardizing every five-acre lot, every ten-acre lot for a subdivision. I don't have a problem with bulk requirements on thirty-nine acres, forty acres and that. Those are going to develop. This is guaranteed. The Lafayette Diocese isn't going to sell one acre of land, and everybody knows it. So this is done. This is a holdout fill-in. If you go down here to the end of One Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street, over back by, I don't know if that was in one, no, it was John. Over, there's a five-acre parcel that sits on the end. Do you know how much they want for that? One million dollars. And they're just going to sit and wait until you knuckle down and make Hazel Dell look like Keystone or anywhere else. Commercial. When you're pumping, you're, I'd be happy as heck. I got twenty-nine acres at a hundred thousand dollars an acre. And it's all being inflated because of stuff like this. The, the footprint is there, follow. I mean, this is why I came a month or two ago and started asking questions, the cart before the horse.
Right.
Greg, you said run parallel. How do you run parallel when nothing's been changed yet? I've asked counsel how many times. I came to you and I had to ask twice. I asked the BZA. It's still not right, and you guys know it. Something needs to be done. You are zoning by BZA. You just did it with the, with Beaver. I won't get into that one, but this, this should not be done. You're jeopardizing this area. One Hundred and Sixty-first to One Hundred and Fifty-Sixth, the footprint's there. It's been done.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Terry.
Okay, we will move on to.
I'd just like to comment, I'd like to see a, a solution, two lots or three lots. Just, I mean, all we see now is a block on paper, the two or three acre, the two or three lot subdivision, how you solve that, just as a schematic.
I understand that. Thank you. And I just, I, I think, I don't know if it was underscored in your materials, but I mean, this did receive a positive recommendation from your professional planning staff and also from the Plan Commission. So, and we followed all the right steps.
Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance number thirty-six dash ten dash twenty-three and. Counsel to consider ordinance number 36-10-23 and ordinance adopting change in land use category from industrial office to commercial office within the corporate campus planned development district for approximately 32 acres in the 14,200 block of East 141st Street South Side.
Move to introduce.
Second. Ms. Ashman.
Good evening. The parcel we're talking about is on the south side of 141st Street, approximately 1,300 feet from the intersection with Oleo Road. Most of you are aware the city bought 77 acres, I think it was a year ago. This is actually the southern 32 acres of that property. The property is currently being designed for the Pacers G League Arena, along with a parking garage, a hotel and a mixed-use residential facility. The project is moving very quickly in the hopes that we have it open for the 2025 G League season. So this project is part of the Innovation Mile master plan area, and we are working to get the master plan adopted and also the standards. They're moving just a little slower. You'll see them in the next two months. So we have devised a plan to make sure that we can start moving dirt for this project as we work to the development of those standards. And everything you adopt as part of the approval of this project will be incorporated into the adopted change to the UDO to make sure this project is integrated within that. So the property is currently zoned CCPD. It has an industrial office overlay to allow the mixed-use residential and the public assembly space. We are recommending the change of that land use type to commercial office. You will see a PD ordinance amendment specific to this property next month, which will allow for the development standards for this process or this project as well. For those that are not familiar, this is a concept plan. It's not a final plan, but this is how the site would lay out in a preliminary fashion. So we, this process follows what we did for Bastion, which would be the change of the land use type and then a PD ordinance to follow. This did come to you with a 10-0 recommendation to adopt from the planning commission.
Any questions for Ms. Ashman?
I apologize, I asked this before. Will it come out of the corporate campus zoning and its own standalone?
The plan for the zoning district would be that anything identified in the Innovation Mile master plan area would receive a, we don't know what the actual name of it is, but it becomes its own zoning district in a manner that's similar to the corporate campus, where everything's zoned at Innovation Mile, and then there are smaller sub-districts within it that line up with the master plan adoption.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel to consider ordinance number 37-10-23 and ordinance adopting an amendment to the preliminary development plan and waivers regarding bulk standards for Prairie Lakes Plan Development specifically at CBS at 14575 Monday Drive.
Move to introduce. Second.
Ms. Yelton.
Good evening. This is a part of the Prairie Lakes Plan Development, which encompasses State Route 37, 146th Street to Cumberland Road to 141st Street. The piece of property that we're particularly talking about is basically the CBS parcel that is at the corner of State Route 37 and 146th Street. This is an aerial photograph of basically what existed there a few years back before we did the roadway improvements. It's kind of difficult to see the yellow line, but the yellow line here is basically the new right-of-way line. So if you take what we had a few years back, this is the current exhibit. So as you can see, along State Route 37, there is no longer a buffer yard. The buffer yard along 146th Street has been reduced. If you noticed in the previous aerial photograph, basically all the parking along here has been removed. So the parking requirements are no longer being met based on our UDO. So with this right-of-way acquisition, the planning department agreed probably five years ago when we started the right-of-way acquisition, that any of these items that basically were in a planned development or other properties that had to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, we, as the city, would be doing that. We weren't asking the property owner to come in and basically make his property right at this point. So basically, there were approximately, with this right-of-way acquisition, a dozen waivers that were required. Most of those dealt with setbacks of either parking or the building. There were landscaping buffer elimination or reductions. There was a reduction in the building-based landscaping, as well as reduction in parking numbers. And again, like I said, a reduction in the building or parking setbacks. CBS is proposing, just for your information, some additional improvements there. They are going to add parking along the Monday roadside and then a little bit of parking adjacent to their building. And although it won't bring them up to the required number of parking spaces, it does help improve their situation. If this ordinance is adopted at your next meeting, it basically allows for this lot to become a legal lot of record for zoning purposes. So if they made any improvements and didn't meet, let's say, the front yard setback requirements, then they wouldn't have to come back to the planning commission or this council for any type of amendments.
But they can't make it worse from here.
That's right.
Any questions for Ms. Yelton?
I would like to, do you want to waive the rules and you want this, to vote on this tonight? You didn't ask, but.
No, I didn't ask.
We're going to go ahead and move to waive the rules and approve this ordinance 37-10-23 on first reading.
There's a motion and a second to waive the rules and approve ordinance number 37-10-23 on first reading. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Seven oh.
Mr. President, I've moved to approve ordinance 37-10-23. What'd I say?
You're right. 37-10-23.
I just need a second.
I didn't see this.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 37-10-23. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
I guess, yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Seven ayes, the Ronay, the ordinance is a.
Thank you.
Can't make it any worse. I mean, to Mr. Boyce's point, this is a state of Indiana Fisher City project that our planning department is responsible to make the best we can. And the CVS has agreed to it. This was not a situation, CVS didn't call this a total tech, they still think they can operate their business there, so.
All right, moving on. Counsel to consider ordinance number 38-10-23 and ordinance adopting a change of zoning from R1, R1 PD residential and A2S residential county zoning to R4 single-family, two-family residential, R5 multifamily residential and PB planned to business for approximately 603 acres north of East 156th Street, east of Bowden Road, south of 156th Street and west of Oleo Road.
Move to introduce. Second.
Ms. Yelton.
Do you want to introduce the other ordinance with it, the PD ordinance, which is 39?
Yeah, we can do that, too. Counsel to consider ordinance number 39-10-23 and ordinance adopting a change of zoning from R4 single-family, two-family residential, R5 multifamily residential and PB planned business to R4, R5 PB, PD residential, commercial, planned development and the adoption of preliminary development plan and ordinance for approximately 603 acres to be known as Finch Creek Plan Development north of East 156th Street, east of Bowden Road, south of 156th Street and west of Oleo Road.
Move to introduce. Second.
Ms. Yelton. No.
So the first ordinance is basically the rezoning ordinance. Again, it is currently zoned R1, single-family residential, and the proposal is to zone at R4 and R5, single-family, two-family residential and multifamily residential. Ordinance 39 is the actual preliminary development plan, ordinance development plan and ordinance setting forth all of their requirements. As you can see by this conceptual development plan, this is a multi-generational mixed-use development, including apartments, approximately 10,000 square feet of neighborhood retail. It has traditional single-family homes, specialty single-family homes, as well as the age-restricted Dell Web product. The area that is here, this is the area for the apartments and the commercial. The area that is basically in the purple or the area B is basically the area for the traditional single-family. Area C is the special just single-family. And area A over here is the Dell Web product. Again, this is a multi-year project that will span approximately seven to 10 years from the beginning of construction until the end of, completion of the entire project. This is one of the first in a long time that we've had this large of a project come forward to the council. The public hearing was held at the planning commission. There were no individuals that came forward at the planning commission to speak either for or against it, and it was sent forward, both of them were sent forward to the council with favorable recommendations for adoption. With that, I will ask you if you have any questions of staff. If not, Rex Ramage and the rest of his team are present for their portion.
Any questions for staff? I'll say before the development team gets up that when Mr. Air and I reviewed this with ARB, it was the first time that we had used an outside firm to help guide the process, and that was led by Veritas. And I really appreciated the outside look that they gave, where they gave recommendations on what type of product we should look at and what we should seek to amend in what was presented. And so first, as big of a development as it is, their guidance really helped make sure that it was an efficient use of everybody's time, and we were able to get through a lot. I don't know if you have anything else to add on that process?
No, I think that we're just starting that process. I think it's going to be a good, it'll help the process move along and hopefully improve the product line as we go.
Yep. If there's no other questions for staff, I'll bring up the development team.
All right, good evening. Rex Ramage, Pulte Homes, 11590 North Radian Street. Between the two of you, I think you took about 95% of what I was going to say. So I won't run through the whole presentation. I think all of us have seen it on more than one occasion over the last handful of years. So we just, we really appreciate the city's efforts from economic development to planning to planning commission, ARB, to now the council in getting us to this point. So we are here and available with any questions you might have. As Joyce Anne noted, it did come with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the planning commission. One of those conditions was that we clean up a few of the items and the ordinance and the PD ordinance specifically. So we are seeking first reading tonight so that we can make sure those changes are completely buttoned up, and then we'll come back before you for final approval.
Mr. Air.
Rex, I know I've asked this question twice, and I'm going to have to ask it again. And overall, the project I like.
Yes, sir.
But the apartments, starting out with, I believe, 300 going up to 500, is that right? Or is it 400 that could go to 500 or?
So the initial phase on the hard corner?
Yes. I know it can go up to 500, I just can't remember what they can build in the first phase.
Want Mr. Smith to value out?
I'll take the first stab. I think this is an easy one. But if there's a detail, then I'll be sure to bring up our TWG partner. So specifically, Mr. Air, the hard corner, that's going to be about 295 units with additional retail space on the first floor.
Okay.
And then if there was a Phase Two to the north of that, that would be up to another 200 multifamily units and 104 sale townhome units.
All right. Well, I know, reading through your proposed ordinance, as I talked about parking in the past, you indicated, or you didn't, but the apartment developer.
Our team, yep.
Indicated that they would meet the UDO with parking. And as I read through this, there's at least 10 waivers away from the UDO. And I don't see where in there, and it talks about what, how many parking spots are in that project. And the reason I'm getting, going in this direction is we've run into problems in other apartments that didn't get adequate parking.
Sure.
And we have 10,000, 10,000 square feet of commercial space in there that's going to require parking also. The initial plan showed, I think, 305 parking spots for 295 units. And I don't know where you're at now with this, but with all the waivers, I'm seeing, I've got a question as to what we're doing there.
Sure. Let me introduce Chase Smith with TWG, who's going to be the resident expert on this issue.
Thank you.
Hello again, Chase Smith with TWG, 1301 East Washington Street, Indianapolis. Counsel Air, yeah, we've discussed this before. I totally hear you. I think, and we haven't requested any waiver or anything at this point, and as far as our site plan goes, you know, what you see right there is really where we're at right now. So I believe, per the ordinance, or, you know, in the PD, we either comply with the UDO parking requirements or, working with planning, we can submit an alternative parking plan. And so.
I don't think that's the way the ordinance reads them. Am I wrong? When you have these 10, 10, 12 different waivers of parking that are written into the ordinance, then that gives you the flexibility to. We're waiving the requirements of the.
Yeah. Well, I don't think we've asked for any waivers as of yet in this ordinance, to my knowledge.
I guess, I don't know the process of what we're.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're getting adequate parking in there.
Again, I hear you, and the only thing I would offer there is it's not in our best interest to have our project underparked either. Nobody wants to live there, so.
We do try to cram as much into a small space as we can for some reason.
I don't think it's a we, I think.
Can you, can you share the page that you're on so they can see what you're reading?
Page eight and nine of your ordinance, 10 or 15, section 15. Ms. Yelton? Do you know what the required, do you know what the required parking is for 295 units and 10,000 square foot of space?
Okay, so here's what I can tell you. I can't calculate out parking for the apartments at this point because they're based on bedrooms. So I don't know if he's got 33 bedroom units, if he's got 100 one-bedroom units, if he's got, you know, the remainder being two-bedroom, because that's how parking is based.
Okay, so when he brings this to you, you will require that he follows UDO on parking, regardless of the waivers that are put in here?
Well, regardless of whatever the waivers say in here, and I'm.
I mean, there's 10, 12 waivers in there.
Probably the last one.
can submit an alternative plan, which would be approved by staff ultimately, and so...
That's my only comment at this point.
Any other comments or questions? You guys good?
Good.
Yeah. We'll see you in two weeks.
First reading, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance number 40-10-23, an ordinance annexing approximately 27 acres north of East 186th Street and west of Hague Road, known as Retreat at Morris Plan Development in Noblesville Township, establishing a public hearing in Resolution RC-42-23, adopting a fiscal plan. Move to introduce? Second. Ms. Yelton.
So this is introduction to a super voluntary annexation. It is for the Retreat at Morris Plan Development. It was one that was before you, within the past year here. It is a single-family development that is basically, again, north of 196th Street and west of Hague Road. Again, it is a super voluntary annexation. We're introducing it this evening. I'm asking that a public hearing be set for the November 14th meeting. We will come back at the November 14th meeting and basically have the public hearing at that point, and also discuss and adopt the fiscal plan. After that, we're basically into a two-week waiting period before you can actually act on the ordinance, so that puts us at the end of November. And then from basically November out to approximately 45 days, there's all the advertisements and our waiting period that we are required to wait by state statute before it actually becomes annexed into the city. But projections are that it would be annexed into the city, basically at the beginning of January.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we establish a public hearing at our November 14th meeting for ordinance 40-10-23.
Second. There's a motion and a second to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 40-10-23 at the November 14th meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Seven oh.
Mr. President.
Ms. Yelton.
This is an annexation of approximately 58 acres. Again, we just spoke about this entire property being the Finch Creek Plan Development. This was the only parcel that at, originally, when the remainder of this was annexed, probably four years ago, roughly five years ago, this was not a part of that annexation. So now that they've acquired that property, or are in the process of acquiring that property, it does need to be annexed into the corporate limits. Again, this would follow the same schedule that I just set forth in the previous one. Again, I would be asking for the council to set a public hearing date for the November 14th meeting.
Mr. President.
There you go.
I would move that we establish a public hearing on our November 14th agenda for ordinance 41-10-23.
Second. There's a motion and a second to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 41-10-23 at our November 14th meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Seven oh.
Thank you.
Counsel to consider ordinance number 42-10-23, an ordinance approving additional appropriation in the Parks Program Fund to authorize the expenditure of additional revenue collected due to stronger-than-expected sales in city's golf operations, and establishing a public hearing. Move to introduce? Second. Ms. Yelton.
This is an annexation of approximately 58 acres. Again, we just spoke about this entire property being the Finch Creek Plan Development. This was the only parcel that at, originally, when the remainder of this was annexed, probably four years ago, roughly five years ago, this was not a part of that annexation. So now that they've acquired that property, or are in the process of acquiring that property, it does need to be annexed into the corporate limits. Again, this would follow the same schedule that I just set forth in the previous one. Again, I would be asking for the council to set a public hearing date for the November 14th meeting.
Mr. President.
There you go.
I would move that we establish a public hearing on our November 14th agenda for ordinance 41-10-23.
Second. There's a motion and a second to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 41-10-23 at our November 14th meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Seven oh.
Thank you.
Counsel to consider ordinance number 42-10-23, an ordinance approving additional appropriation in the Parks Program Fund to authorize the expenditure of additional revenue collected due to stronger-than-expected sales in city's golf operations, and establishing a public hearing. Move to introduce? Second. Ms. Yelton.
Yes, second year in a row that we're coming to you with a similar ordinance. As Counselor O'Connor had alluded to, this is great news. Our golf business continues to be strong and stay strong. In this case, we've had so much business this year that expenses are outpacing the budgeted amounts in the golf department, so we're coming to you for additional appropriation in golf. But again, these expenses, you know, they're contingent on the amount of business that the golf, that our golf business is receiving, and because that is way up, our expenses go up lockstep with them. If you have any questions, Mr. Brandon Bennett is here tonight, the director of our Parks Department.
Mr. Bennett has waded through the rest of the meeting. I'd love to hear just how good golf is doing. We heard it finance, but I think it's worth celebrating, so...
Good evening, members of the council. Brandon Bennett, Director of Parks. Yeah, it's been, it's been a nice run from the golf operation perspective. At the end of September, to put it in perspective, we had hit our numbers from 2022, and 2022 was a record year for us. So we continually are outpacing where we have been over the past couple of years, and we're not showing any signs right now of slowing down. Hopefully with a good October and a strong, a strong Black Friday event for us, we can, we can look forward to being well into the black at the end of the season, even with these additional appropriations that we're requesting, and potentially use some of that towards other capital improvements within the golf operation. So it's been a great run. I know Gary's tired. He's working his tail end off.
He's young, he's got no...
Yeah, but, but things are going really well, so I appreciate it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schwartz handed me a piece of paper, says 23 revenues from September, 210,000. Prior year was 161, just to put that in perspective. Pretty strong. And the weather's been good this month, too, so, so far. Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I think you need a public hearing for this at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Ordinance 42-10-23.
Second. I take that was a motion.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. There's a motion and a second to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 42-10-23 at the October 24th meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Seven oh.
Thank you.
Counsel to consider ordinance number 43-10-23, an ordinance amending discharge filter backwash rates and charges for the use and services rendered by the City of Noblesville, Indiana Sewer Works, and establishing a public hearing. Move to introduce? Second.
Jonathan Mergo with Noblesville Utilities. Members of the council, evening. Mr. President, I'm here today to talk to you about an amendment, a proposed amendment to our utility rates. The statutes and ordinances governing sanitary sewer rates are based on the concept that customers should pay a reasonable rate based on the relative impact their sewage production activities have on the city's collection and treatment systems. Accordingly, Noblesville Utilities has worked with our financial advisor and rate consultant, the legal counsel, mayor's office, and city council to establish various rate categories, including rates for residential customers to industrial users. We've recently identified a class of users whose activities and impact on the wastewater system don't neatly fit with any of the previously established rate categories, and specifically with how sewer use is measured and billed. That is public water utilities, and more specifically in relation to their, their water treatment plant process water. Our existing rates for commercial and industrial users is based on water usage billing data from their water meter. Drinking water production facilities produce significant sewage as a part of their production processes, and that water is not metered, billed, and reported to the city like other water customers. So we've worked with our rate consultant to analyze the impacts and advise us on a fair rate structure for this type of impact, and we shared our analysis and proposed methodology with the two impacted water utilities, that's Citizens Energy Group and Indiana American Water, for their feedback and input. The proposed ordinance in front of you tonight is our effort at establishing a reasonable rate based on the relevant facts and circumstances.
Any questions?
Mr. President, I've moved to establish a public hearing for ordinance 43-10-23 at the November 14th meeting.
Second. There's a motion and a second to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 43-10-23 at the November 14th meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Seven oh.
Mr. President, I've moved to amend the title of the ordinance 43-10-23 at the November 14th agenda as presented.
Can I get a second? Second. There's a motion and a second to amend the title of ordinance number 43-10-23 on the November 14th agenda as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Seven oh.
Mr. President, I've moved to amend the title of the ordinance 43-10-23 at the November 14th agenda as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Seven oh.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ladies, number three. Counsel to receive a summary of fiscally neutral third quarter appropriation transfers pursuant to Resolution RC-1-23. Mr. Zalgowski.
Yes, good evening. This is just a, an item as part of RC-123. The Office of Finance and Accounting is required to present to counsel any fiscally neutral transactions that have been submitted. This one specifically as per the third quarter. So this item on here is just confirming that you did receive those transactions, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to go over them. I could explain it in further detail if you'd like.
Any questions?
Thank you.
We'll move on. Counsel to receive summary of appropriation of third quarter grant proceeds pursuant to Resolution RC-2-23.
Yeah, Jeff Spalding, CFO. And again, this is very similar. It's kind of a companion to the last action. You know, counsel through a resolution, provide some authorization to my office to appropriate grant proceeds under certain sets of circumstances. We've presented this at the Finance Committee, and this is just the official submission of that report to you. And again, I'll make the same offer that Mr. Zalgowski did. If you have any questions, I can go through and explain the items that were presented, that were included, so...
Any questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Any council comments?
Just one real quickly. I was remiss in giving Mr. Mergo some kudos for doing all the work that needed to be done to get these water rates, or the sewer rates set with the water utilities. It wasn't really that easy a lot, and so he did some diligent work to get to that point, so kudos to you and your team.
The significant number.
The elements work.
Absolutely.
Anything else? We are adjourned.